Mr. Chair, as mentioned, the City won first place in the 2025 Rafael M. Salas Caunlarang Pantao Award. And we were given 70,000 as financial grant. The City Mayor, Mr. Chair, is requesting for us to pass a resolution authorizing her to enter into negotiate and sign a memorandum of agreement so that we can utilize, Mr. Chair, the said financial grant. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
The letter dated November 3, 2025, Honorable City Mayor, requesting for authority to enter, negotiate, and sign a memorandum of agreement with the Land Bank of the Philippines relative to the production of e-card with combines the functions of the Land Bank ATM and the City Government's employees ID.
Counselor Baldimoro?
Mr. Chair, to the ATM card of our employee, and I understand that aside from ATM card, this will also serve as the ID of our employee. So may I move, Mr. Chair, for passage of a resolution authorizing the City Mayor to enter into negotiate and sign a memorandum of agreement with the Land Bank of the Philippines. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Any second?
Second.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
The proposed resolution of the Honorable JCR Albius congratulating and commending Dr. Vasil E. Victoria of Barangay San Felipe and Professor at Ateneo Dinaga University for winning Best Paper Presenter and Best Research Paper in two international research competitions.
Counselor Albius?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A resident of Barangay San Felipe and a professor at Ateneo Dinaga University, Dr. Vasil Victoria won in two international research competition. First, in the Seventh Luminary International Conference in Ho Chi Minh City, Vietnam, and the Second International Virtual Research Conference on Education for Sustainable Development, hosted by Biscas last October 16 to 18, 2025. So may I move that we pass a resolution of commendation on joint and collective motion.
Joint and collective?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
The letter dated November 6, 2025, Honorable City Mayor, requesting for authority to enter, negotiate, and sign a memorandum of agreement with Angat Pinas Incorporated and the Department of Education Schools Division's Office, Naga City, on the implementation of Angat Buhas Bayan Ko Teacher Ko Literacy Programs in the City.
Reaction? Yes, Counselor Gail?
Mr. Chair, the Angat Pinas through its Bayan Ko Teacher Ko Literacy Program is continuing their efforts to augment our programs for education in the city. Therefore, the City Mayor is requesting for our authority so that she could enter into negotiate and sign a memorandum of agreement with Angat Pinas. So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
The letter dated November 6, 2025, Honorable City Mayor, requesting for authority to enter, negotiate, and sign a memorandum of agreement with the Municipality of Magarau Camarinisur in relation to the implementation of YACAP program, Naga City General Hospital as the referral facility.
Counselor Dr. Bitoborra?
The City Mayor will enter in a memo with the Municipality of Magarau.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
The letter dated November 6, 2025, Honorable City Mayor, requesting for authority to enter, negotiate, and sign a memorandum of agreement with the University of Nueva Caseres relative to the updating of business plans of the local economic enterprises, City College of Naga, and the Our Lady of Lourdes Infirmary.
Again? Yes, Counselor Mendoza?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This refers to the preparation of the financial and project documents of Our Lady of Lourdes Infirmary, being a local economic enterprise. So with that, Mr. Chair, I move that we pass a resolution authorizing the City Mayor to enter into negotiate and sign a moa with the University of Nueva Caseres in relation to the updating of business plans of the City College of Naga and Our Lady of Lourdes Infirmary. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Any second?
Second.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
The proposed resolution of the Honorable Francisco M. Mendoza, requesting the Philippine Center for Post-Harvest Development and Mechanization to grant the City Government one unit of drying system, too.
Counselor Mendoza?
This refers to the program of Filmeq, providing, actually, this is a warehouse, Mr. Chair, which the City Government and the City Nursery would be able to utilize. So with that, Mr. Chair, I move that we pass a resolution requesting the Philippine Center and Post-Harvest Development and Mechanization, or Filmeq, to grant the City Government one unit of drying system, too. I so move, Mr. Chair, on joint and collective motion.
Joint and collective?
Joint and collective.
The letter dated November 6, 2025, Honorable City Mayor, requesting for authority to sign for and on behalf of the City Government, the deed of donation and acceptance executed by Okada Foundation Incorporated and Tiger Resort Leisure and Entertainment Incorporated, Okada Manila, in favor of the city, involving medical equipment, a mobile clinic, and a garbage compactor truck.
Counselor Dr. Butzborra?
Yes, sir. I move for the passage of a resolution authorizing the City Mayor to undergo a memorandum of agreement with the deed of donation with Okada Foundation and the Tiger Resort.
Any second?
Second.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. Next item, please.
On Finnish business, the letter dated November 5, 2025, inviting in today's regular session, the City Legal Officer, the City Planning and Development Coordinator, to enlighten the Sangunean on the provision of the zoning ordinance, particularly section four, Article nine thereof, to determine whether the practice of spot reclassification is in conformity with the said provision.
Where is the City Legal Officer?
We will follow up their presence, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Secretary?
We will follow up, Mr. Chair, to the invitees, for their presence.
Okay, we will defer discussion of this matter, and I am requesting the Secretariat to invite Attorney Ohashiro to attend this session. Yes, Counselor Baldimoro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since we will invite the CPDO, if the body will consider, Mr. Chair, that the AIP, the Committee on Rules, if they amenable, to transfer the annual investment program from new business to special business or order. The reason, Mr. Chair, we will still conduct the budget hearing, and we have just three weeks.
And you haven't started the budget hearing at the committee level?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We still await for the approval of the AIP.
What's the reaction of the Chairman of the Committee on Rules? Counselor Rosales?
I understand the predicament, Mr. Chairman, of the Chair of the Committee on Rules. I have no objection with this request.
So we will transfer the AIP to the SBO?
As item number 12, Mr. Chair, and to take up later, to invite the CPDO head and also the City Budget Officer.
And if... City Budget Officer?
The CPDO.
And the CPDO?
And if possible, a representative from the City Mayor's office.
I think they are engaged in cleanup drives. Nong Nong kindly check whether they give more importance to the cleanup drives or the passage of the 2026 budget. So in the meantime, we will defer discussion of item number 12.
The report of the Committee on Information Technology.
Information Technology?
Counselor Macrae?
The Chairman is also quite busy patching up the road systems in the city, my goodness. Next item, please.
The report with the Committee on Women, Family Relations, and Gender Equality.
Counselor Gail Abunal Gomez?
Mr. Chair, for the Committee on Women, Family Relations, and Gender Equality, may I request acknowledgement of this report?
Your report is duly acknowledged?
The meeting was held last October 22.
Was there a forum?
There was a forum, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you.
For the first item, the proposed ordinance of his representation co-authored by the Honorable... Mr. Chair, this is a public hearing, I'm sorry. So during the public hearing, the proposed ordinance authored by this representation, co-authored by the Honorable Elmer S. Baldimoro, was presented for guidance, requesting for guidance of the invited guests. For... May I go directly to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
For the disposition, Mr. Chair, the Committee recommends its approval, for the approval of the proposed ordinance subject, Mr. Chair, to the submission of the final draft containing the revisions based on the recommendations during the public hearing. Mr. Chair, may I just present the recommendations and if I...
Just a second. I wish to acknowledge the presence of Counselor Aris Macrae.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning.
Mr. Chair, the only recommendation came from the CSWDO requesting that their existing practice of pulling out the term is pulling out children from their parents who are neglectful and abusive, especially when process is ongoing. They requested that this practice be specified in this particular proposed ordinance. So an additional section for that, Mr. Chair, has been included. Section 15 reads, the authority of, the title is "Authority of the CSWDO for Temporary Custody," that this particular section reads, "The City Social Welfare and Development Office, based on comprehensive assessment, shall have authority to immediately take temporary custody of any child found to be abused or neglected by parents or guardians and place the child in a shelter, subject to existing court processes in accordance with RA 7610, relevant CSWD policies and applicable laws. The CSWDO may effect the removal of the child from the parental home during intervention proceedings with the parents, and while alternative parental authority or foster care arrangements are being explored, in order to safeguard the child's safety and welfare. If necessary, the CSWDO shall coordinate with the courts for the issuance of appropriate protective orders and ensure the child's rights are upheld at all times. Parents or guardians shall be assured due process and are required to participate in family intervention programs as a condition for any reunification. All cases should be promptly reported to the appropriate agencies and authorities with legal sanctions applied as warranted." So with this particular revision, Mr. Chair, may I now move for third and final reading for this proposed ordinance and acting parental responsibility, providing guidance for children's well-being, penalty for prohibited acts, and establishing comprehensive programs on positive parenting, child protection, and community education.
Any second?
I so move, Mr. Chair.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
That's all for the report. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I thank my colleagues for their support.
Thank you, Counselor Gail Abunal Gomez. We will go back to item number two. The Committee Report of the Committee on Information Technology, headed by Counselor Attorney Aris Macrae.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. May I request that the report of the Committee on Information Technology be acknowledged?
Your report is duly acknowledged?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There was a forum, the meeting held on October...
There was a forum?
Yes, Mr. Chair. October 30, 2025. On the sole item for consideration, the proposed ordinance authored by Honorable Jepson Romeo Felix, establishing a comprehensive governance framework for the responsible use and innovation in artificial intelligence in the city of Naga. We also considered during the hearing, the letter of the ICT Industry Development Bureau of the DICT, Mr. Chair, Mr. Gino Ilano. We also considered the letter of the School Administrator Dixie Diaz of the Global Site IT Studies. Likewise, the email from Ateneo Dinaga University with their comments on the proposed ordinance. Actually, the hearing was attended by no less than the Dean of the Computer Studies of Ateneo Dinaga. Likewise, the letter of the DEPDEV, the Department of Economy, Planning, and Development on the proposed AI ordinance of Naga. We had a lengthy discussion, Mr. Chair, on the focus of the ordinance, and they were all considered by the body and by the proponent. May I move that the disposition be read instead?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On motion of Honorable Francisco Mendoza, seconded by Honorable Felix, the Committee resolved to return the proposed ordinance to its author for necessary revisions incorporating the comments submitted to the Sangunean Panlongso, and the recommendations formulated during the hearing. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
That ends our report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Aris Macrae. Next item, please.
The Report of the Committee on Transport.
The Committee on Transport, headed by Counselor Omar Buenavere, and let me acknowledge the presence of the City Planning and Development Office Chief Willie Priess.
Mr. Chair, may I request acknowledgement of the Committee on Transport report?
Your report is duly acknowledged?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Transport conducted its committee hearing on October 29, 2025, and there was a forum. For the first item, the letter dated July 28, 2025, of Mr. Renee Gumba, PSO head, addressed to the Mayor, expressing their reservation regarding the request of Barangay Santa Cruz to allow small e-tracks as a public utility vehicle in their barangay. May I proceed to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
After a lengthy discussion, on motion of Honorable Francisco Mendoza, seconded by Senior Citizen Counselor Milano and Senior Citizen Counselor Adan Junior, the Committee resolved to recommend to the Sangunean Panlongso to advise the barangay council of Santa Cruz to submit its proposed ordinance allowing small e-tracks as public utility vehicles, together with pictures and specifications of the e-tracks, to the Naga City Urban Transport Mobility Council for further study, validation, and verification in accordance with LTO guidelines. And I so move, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Furthermore, the Committee resolved to request the Naga City Urban Transport and Mobility Council to submit its report and recommendation within seven days from receipt of the documents from barangay Santa Cruz. And I so move, Mr. Chair.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Second item is the proposed ordinance authored by this representation, Honorable Buenavere, rationalizing the registration and use of e-bikes or micro mobility vehicles in the city of Naga, amending for the purpose, the City Ordinance Number 2023-030, an ordinance requiring the registration of e-bikes in the city of Naga. May I proceed to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
The Committee resolved to recommend to the Sangunean Panlongso to return the proposed ordinance to the proponent for revision based on the recommendations, suggestions made, and the latest issuances cited by the representatives from the Land Transportation Office and the LTFRB during the committee hearing.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
The third item is the letter of Mr. Renee Gumba submitting the report and recommendations to the request for additional units of special franchises for tricockable for hire in barangay Carolina. May I proceed to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
The Committee resolved to recommend to the Sangunean Panlongso to wait for the submission of the Public Safety Office of a detailed report outlining the basis and factors used in determining the proposed routes. Furthermore, to direct the PSO to coordinate with the barangay council regarding their recommendations, including the submission of a barangay resolution conforming with the PSO's proposed routes. And I so move, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Next item is the endorsement dated October 15, 2025, of the Tricockable Task Force endorsing the applications for transfer of tricockable franchises for review and approval. Letter A is the application for transfer of franchise of Mr. Eric Dimdam from his diseased father, Efren Dimdam. Correction. Letter B, the application for transfer of franchise of Ms. Marian Arhona, Adoration Arhona, from her diseased mother, Adoration B. Arhona. Letter C is the application for transfer of franchise of Mrs. Evangeline Manalo to her sister, Winnie S. Pinpin. May I proceed to the dispositions, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
On the application of Eric Dimdam, on motion of Senior Citizen Counselor Simeon Jesus Adan Junior, seconded by Honorable Senior Citizen Counselor Corazon Milano and Senior Citizen Counselor Ernesto De La Cruz, the Committee resolved to recommend to the Sangunean Panlongso to consider the application of Mr. Eric Dimdam as a new franchisee application instead of a transfer, as per ordinance number 2014-023, which provides that in the event of the death of a franchise holder, the franchise is automatically deemed open for application, and the next of kin shall have priority and to pass a resolution approving the application of Mr. Eric Dimdam for tricockable franchise number NC05STF-09-07, being the sole priority applicant, subject to the completion of the requirements and payment of the prescribed fees under the City Ordinance Number 93-049, as amended by City Ordinance Number 2014-023. And I so move, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. Let me acknowledge the presence of Counselor Jepson Felix, and also the presence of the representative coming from the City Mayor's office, Mr. Dave Berkachio. Proceed.
On the application for franchise of Ms. Marian Arhona, on motion of City Counselor Senior Citizen Jesus Adan Junior, seconded by Senior Citizen Counselor Del Minguez and Senior Citizen Counselor De La Cruz, the Committee resolved to recommend to the Sangunean Panlongso to consider the application of Marian Arhona as new franchisee, as per ordinance number 2014-023, with the same circumstances as that of Eric Dimdam. And this is subject to the completion of the requirements and payment of the prescribed fees under City Ordinance Number 93-049, as amended by City Ordinance 2014-023. And I so move, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. Let me acknowledge the presence of our City Treasurer, Maricor Gayanillo. Proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, on the application of Mrs. Evangeline Manalo to her sister, Sister Winnie S. Pinpin. Finding all the documents to be complete and in order and the transfer of tricockable franchise is allowed under the existing city ordinance, on motion of Senior Citizen Counselor Adan Junior, seconded by Senior Citizen Counselor Milano and Senior Citizen Counselor De La Cruz, the Committee resolved to recommend to the Sangunean Panlongso for the passage of a resolution approving the application of Mrs. Evangeline Manalo for transfer of the said franchise to her sister, Winnie Pinpin, subject to the requirements and payment of fees under the existing city ordinances. And I so move, Mr. Chair.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. Let me also acknowledge the presence of Madame... Let me also acknowledge the presence of Madame Amy Velasco of the City Budget Office. Proceed, Councilor.
For item number five, the email from Tiger Terra Transport Corporation relative to the proposal for collaboration on electric vehicles and charging stations. May I proceed to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
On motion of Senior Citizen Milano, seconded by Senior Citizen Jesus Adan Junior, Senior Citizen de la Cruz, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangunian Palosod to defer consideration due to the absence of the proponent. And I sumo, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Next item is the endorsement of the head of Tramobile Task Force endorsing the application for transfer of franchise from Honorable Maria Corazon Penyaflor to Mr. Jude Mark Penyaflor for review and approval. I proceed to the disposition, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
Finding all the documents to be complete and in order and the transfer of tramobile franchise is allowed under the existing city ordinances, on motion of Honorable Adan Junior, seconded by Mr. Darilai, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangunian Palosod for the passage of a resolution approving the application of Mrs. Honorable Corazon Penyaflor for the transfer of tramobile franchise number NC05-RTF-0495 to her son Jude Mark Penyaflor, subject to the completion of the requirements and payment of prescribed fees under the existing city ordinances. And I sumo, Mr. Chair.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. Let me acknowledge the presence of Attorney Angel O Astro, the city legal officer.
Next item is the letter of Mr. Roderick Reforsado of the Beagle Central Station Terminal manager designate endorsing the collective request of PUV operators and stakeholders of Naga City Eastbound Terminal located at CBT2 for the inclusion of the eastbound terminal in the designated route of Naga City jeepness. May I proceed to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
On motion of Honorable Adan Junior, seconded by Mr. Darilai, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangunian Palosod for the passage of a resolution authorizing the conduct of a 30-day dry run of POJ Naga Loop Service A and B with the following specific routes: Centro Magcaysay, Loop A or clockwise loop, that is from General Luna to Pivorgu Street to Penyafrance Avenue to Magcaysay Avenue to Taal Avenue to Jay Miranda Avenue to Leon S. Auriel Street or Mayflower Street, back to Magcaysay Avenue to Roas Avenue to Carnation Street to Anciano Street to Beagle Central Station to Ninoy Cory Street to Roas Avenue to barangay triangulo to Centro to Magcaysay Avenue back to Roas Avenue to Fraternidad Street back to Biaknabatu Street, General Luna Street to complete the loop. And also Centro to Magcaysay Loop B counterclockwise from General Luna Street to Biaknabatu Street to Fraternidad Street to Roas Avenue, Ninoy Cory Avenue to Beagle Central Station to Buningcia Street to Ramon S. Felipe Junior Street to Anciano Street, where is the eastbound terminal, back to Ramon Felipe Junior Street to Raoul Luco Street to Roas Avenue to Magcaysay Avenue to Leon S. Auriel Street or Mayflower Street to Jay Miranda Avenue to Taal Avenue back to Magcaysay Avenue to Penyafrance Avenue and back to General Luna Street to complete the loop. And I sumo, Mr. Chair.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the thanks for your report.
Thank you, Councilor Omar Buenafé. We will go back to item number...
Under SPO, Mr. Chair, item number 12.
Item number 12 of the Special Business or Order, the AIP. So the rules are suspended. Again, we wish to acknowledge the presence of Willie Prias, the head of the City Planning and Development Office.
Thank you, your honors, Marina Agapo. We are submitting for your consideration Resolution Number 01 Series of 2025. This was taken up by the full CDC last November 3, Monday last week, so that we can have the basis for preparing and acting on the proposed 2026 budget of the city government. Said resolution presents a total allocation of 3.198.21 billion, broken down into general public services, 1.2 billion, which is, let me refer to the document. General public services amounts to 37% of the total proposed spending or investment program, followed by economic services, 241 million, which represents 8% of the total investment program, followed by environmental and infrastructure services, 564 million, or 18% of the investment program. And lastly, last but not least, social services, 1.2 billion, 37% of the entire investment program. This sends the message that the city government is prioritizing social services as well as general public services in its proposed budget for next year. Append it to the resolution is a narrative explanation of the proposed investment program as well as the detailed office-by-office presentation of the proposed investment program. This is being submitted for consideration of the Sangunian Palosod and its approval so that we can move into the budgeting process where there is going to be a public presentation by the Naga City People's Council as well as the committee hearings of the Sangunian Committee on Appropriation.
Reaction from the chairman of the Committee on Appropriations, Councilor Elmer Valdemoro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, first, as mentioned by Sir Willie Prias, as of today, they are presenting the NCPC.
The NCPC has already scheduled a series of public presentations. I think that is taking place within this week. And I don't know what the impact of the recent typhoon is, but we were given information that it is supposed to be pushing through within this week, unless there are changes, your honor. But we're ready, from the side of the executive, we're ready to present and defend the proposed investment program.
Yes, Councilor Valdemoro?
Mr. Chair, we cannot proceed to the budget hearing. Until such time, the public presentation was finished. So we still await for the public presentation.
So at this stage, we cannot tackle that particular item?
We could tackle this AIP, Mr. Chair. I am preparing to the 2026 annual budget, the budget hearing to be conducted by the Committee on Appropriation.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Our submission is that the AIP is separate from the budget. Our request is for the Sangunian to act on the AIP with the hope that it can approve it so that the budget process can proceed. And the NCPC consultations are part of the budget process.
Okay, again, the chairman of the Committee on Appropriation.
So may we request, Mr. Chair, to the executive and to the NCPC to hold the public presentation this week so that our budget hearing could be scheduled next week?
We will...
Is that possible, Willie?
We will communicate with the NCPC. They previously sent us a schedule that it will happen within the week. But let me reiterate that the topic at hand, the consideration of the AIP, is a precedent, a precedent step before the budget process. So it remains our request for the Sangunian to consider this item with the hope of approving it so that we can proceed to the budget process.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Yes, Mr. Chair, we understand the predicament of Sir Willie. May mga haput lang po ako, Mr. Chair. First, on the submitted summary of the AIP, on the Ginawang Nagenyo Program, may we know kung hinali na nung program na ni since mayon ng allocation for the budget?
May we request...
Okay, the representative of the mayor's office?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, the Ginawang Nagenyo Program is now being mainstreamed under the HSDO. So any assistance that would have proceeded to the communities under our LERC would now be taken care of by the Housing and Development Office. Also, if we recall, Mr. Eric Salbino, who used to handle the program, is now with the HSDO. So what the mayor wanted was to capture even the LERCs to be part of the communities being looked into by the HSDO so that we can have the whole of the city approach in catering to them. So they will be part now of the caseload since they are informal settlers, Mr. Chair.
Councilor Valdemoro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, another is, may we know kung sa indig din nakalaag si breakdown for the local development fund and the LDRRM fund?
Mr. Willie Prias?
There is only a lamsum allocation for the LDF. As we move forward with the budget, the executive will detail the allocations for those special purpose, special funds.
Any other comment from the council? Yes, Councilor Hill Rosales?
Mr. Chairman, I would advise that the local development fund be already detailed in the annual investment plan. The plan will serve as the basis of the budget. If there is no detail in the plan, then what are we going to operationalize in the budget?
Reaction, Willie Prias?
The suggestion is well taken. If we may suggest a way forward, you can conditionally approve this subject to the submission of a detailed allocation for both the LDRRMF as well as the LDF, if that is possible, Mr. Chair.
So as stated earlier by Councilor Valdemoro, there should be a clear cut... How do you put that? Breakdown of the various items?
Yes, your honor, if I may, there are three items...
You were telling us, Willie, that we could just do that as the budget hearing progresses. But I believe Councilor Valdemoro and Councilor Rosales are correct, we should have a clear-cut breakdown of the items.
We will submit by tomorrow, your honor, the details of these three items. SPA amounting to 1.1, 102.6, LDF amounting to 245 as well as 107. So we will need a day to finalize the allocations, the line items for this.
Reaction, Councilor Valdemoro, that Mr. Prias will be submitting the detailed allocation by tomorrow?
If the body would allow, Mr. Chair, we approve this conditionally pending the submission to each member of the Sangunian a copy of the detailed breakdown of LDF, SPA, and LDRRM fund.
By the way, your honor, SPA is already detailed. Only the LDF and the LDRRMF needs to be broken down.
So that will be submitted tomorrow?
Yes, your honor.
Yes, Councilor Mendoza?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just certain clarifications. Enak po duman sa consultation by the Naga City People's Council. Gusto ko lang malinawan, Mr. Chair, Willie, nagconduct na nung hearing ang NCPC by cluster, bako sang by office. Because I understand dahil kuwan ni kita, kuwan ni kita ang finish line, by specific outcomes, pinagtriripon si mga opisina, and there was a single public presentation conducted by the NCPC. My question, Mr. Chair, is that would that be the same as the public presentation by office?
They are different, your honors, because what the office, together with the NCPC, conducted are preparations for the investment programs. They are not actually specifically the budget. So, by the way, I reviewed the document. It's only the LDF that needs to be detailed. The LDRRMF is already detailed. So going back to the question, there has to be a public presentation of what the budget should be. The AIP is amounting to almost 3.2 billion. The budget is, I think, a billion less. So what should be presented in that event is the budget itself, no longer the investment program?
Okay.
Another requirement, Mr. Chair?
Follow up?
Paginiling tayong annual investment program, may column na fund source and may mga PPAs na nakalaag LDF. So that would imply that these specific PPAs would be charged on the LDF. Itupong kayan, itong detalyadong page. Ang query again is that different from the lamsum allocation, from the lamsum amount allocated for LDF, kuy tumanga PPAs na naka-identify as charged against the LDF, itong ilalag duman sa LDF?
The latter is correct, your honor. That the fact that the offices have made a specific identification in their submissions will enable us to make the determination by tomorrow. So we will be guided by their proposal in finalizing what should be allocated in the LDF.
So in effect, it would be a matter of transferring, consolidating all the indicated PPAs charged to LDF into the LDF?
Yes, your honor, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And let me recapitulate, your honor. It's only the LDF that needs to be detailed. The LDRRMF is already, has already breakdowns. The SPA, the same. So the team will only work on the LDF.
Okay, so Councilor Valdemoro, proceed with your motion.
Mr. Chair, as manifested by Sir Willie, the breakdown of the LDRRM fund was already in the annual AIP. May we know kung sa in po dyan?
There is a spreadsheet that goes along with the document. I don't know if that was transmitted to the Sangunian Palosod. At any rate...
I see the breakdown of the SPA, Mr. Chair. My purpose of identifying, since ang hinahagad ta is duwakuta, kung may pahiling dyan si breakdown kang LDRRM, so ang isa-submit na lang sa to, is the copy of the LDF.
Okay, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair, so may I move, Mr. Chair, to grant the request to approve conditionally the annual investment program subject to the submission of the Local Development Fund? I so move, Mr. Chair.
Any second. Any objection there being none? Objection?
Clarification only, Mr. Chair. As stated by Mr. Willie Preles, this is a PPAS that would be charged against the LDF. It's already embedded in that annual investment program. So, I understand that what the city planning, what the Executive would do is to consolidate all those PPAs and put them into a single page under LDF. Otherwise, if there are new PPAs, a new company, for the purpose of having a consolidated list under LDF, it will be returned to the City Development Council. But if it is consolidated, this is the one that is indicated, LDF and sourcing, then no need to go back to the CDC. That's a matter of clerical task, and the same could be submitted. And I understand that would be the option that would be done by the CPDO.
We do not intend to go back to the CDC because that will take a lot of time and logistics. So we'll just reorganize and present in tabular form the projects that will be funded by the LDF based on this AIP.
Yes, Counselor Mendoza.
In essence, Mr. Chair, LDF is already included in the AIP. Just a matter of making it, changing the presentation to have a consolidated list under LDF.
Okay, so there is this motion from Counselor Valdemoro. Any second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Objection? So the motion is approved? The provisional approval of the AIP?
Thank you, Your Honors.
Mr. Chair.
Next item, please. Yes, Counselor Aris Makaraid.
May I make a question, Mr. Chair? May we request for, in addition to the tabular presentations, if it can be accommodated to have pie graphs or graphical presentation of all tabular items which are divided into percentages?
We will do so, Your Honor.
For better appreciation.
Willie?
Thank you, sir.
Next item, please.
The invitation to the city legal officer and the city planning and development coordinator to enlighten the Sangunian on the provision of the zoning ordinance, particularly Section 4, Article 9 thereof, to determine whether the practice of SPAT reclassification is in conformity with the said provision.
Again, we wish to acknowledge the presence of Attorney Ojastro, the city legal officer. The rules are still suspended?
The Sangunian seeks legal clarification on whether the practice of SPAT reclassification, rezoning a specific parcel outside the general zoning pattern is consistent with Section 4, Article 9 of the ordinance, and whether it can be legally sustained under existing zoning rules. And here is our initial impression, Your Honors. As a backgrounder, we would like to state that, and to clarify, whether SPAT reclassification or a rezoning of a specific parcel outside the general zoning pattern is legally permissible under Ordinance Number 20071, and how it interacts with ordinance provisions on variance and exception. Now, as we see it, there are key legal points that we need to take into account. One is that SPAT reclassification is not a variance or exception. It involves a change in zoning classification itself, not merely a deviation from use or form. Now, point number two, Ordinance Number 20071 does not provide a direct mechanism for reclassification, but it outlines procedures for exceptions and variants that require, number one, written application, number two, vicinity map, three, affidavit of non-objection, four, public hearing, five, decision by the zoning board of adjustment and appeals. Now, under RA 7160, it allows LGUs to reclassify land via ordinance, but it is subject to consultation with the issue, clearance from PA and DAR for agricultural lands. Using variance exemption procedures to justify SPAT reclassification may be legally tenuous unless the ordinance itself is amended to explicitly allow it. So, again, I would like to restate that SPAT reclassification is a legislative act that changes the zoning map. It is distinct from a variance or exception which are administrative remedies for hardship or special cases. So the legal risk framing that we're doing is that using variance or exception procedures to achieve SPAT reclassification may expose the LGU to legal challenges for bypassing the required ordinance-based reclassification process under the Local Government Code. Now, there is an ordinance gap. So Ordinance Number 20071 does not define or regulate SPAT reclassification. This creates ambiguity in how such requests are processed and justified. So our recommendation, Your Honors, is for improving the requirements, the process, the ordinance, is to ensure legal defensibility, I recommend amending the ordinance. To define SPAT reclassification, number two, to establish a separate procedure for its approval, number three, to require alignment with a club and inter-agency clearance. Now, for audit and transparency as a reminder, any reclassification must be documented with public consultation, technical validation, alignment with land use plans to withstand audit scrutiny. That's for our initial impressions of the matter at hand, Your Honors.
Reaction, Counselor Mendoza?
In summary, Mr. Chair, what the city legalists has explained to us is that SPAT reclassification is not possible, but exceptions and variances can be done. The difference between the two is that SPAT reclassification is permanent. On the other hand, variances, whether exception or deviation, are temporary. They are good for, I think, one or two years only. And the job of the zoning administrator is to consolidate all those variances and from there decide whether it is time to change the zoning of a particular area. That's the proper process, not automatically and permanently change a particular parcel of land into a different use, a different from the general usage in that area. So to sum up, SPAT reclassification has no basis, variances have. But variances are temporary.
But I think the city legal officer is posing that we come up with the necessary ordinance?
Amendment, Your Honor. To properly define it and include that in the ordinance itself.
What is your reaction to that proposal, Counselor Mendoza?
I believe, Mr. Chair, it is not as simple as putting an amendment into the zoning ordinance allowing SPAT reclassification. Because zoning or reclassification of land goes through several stages, not only at the level of the Sangunian Panglungsod, not only at the level of a public hearing in the city, but also at the regional level, the regional land use committee, as well as at the national level, Office of the Secretary. In other words, our land use plan, that is why it's taking so long, it goes through our law and it goes through the Office of the Secretary. Now, what we are doing, the practice of the Sangunian Panglungsod, is we bypass those processes and amend outright, just at our level, our land use plan and the zoning ordinance. So I believe, Mr. Chair, it cannot be done through a simple amendment of the zoning ordinance authorizing us to make SPAT reclassification. Because there is a process that goes with land use preparation.
So in other words, you are telling us that we should not use SPAT reclassification?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Reaction from the city legal officer?
That was the context of our initial reaction, Your Honor, because it is actually a distortion to the land use. And indeed, it might be violative of certain regulations and inter-agency permission, especially those for special types of lands. And indeed, it has to go through a lot more rigorous process than simply having variations or variances. And it may also affect due process because normally in SPAT reclassification, you would really have to go through the usual process of land reclassification, a lot of public consultations, and...
So in other words, you agree with Counselor Mendoza that SPAT reclassification is not possible here?
There is no legal basis yet, Your Honor. Although I previously made the comment that it may be included as a part of an amendment if the Sangunian would really be looking at it as a exceptional remedy under very exceptional circumstances. But again, we have to go back to the usual requirements for having a reclassification of land.
What will happen to the previous cases approved by the Sangunian Panglungsod?
Yep. For now, unless it goes through a serious legal challenge, it remains effective.
So I think the city planning and development officer chief has something to say?
Thank you, Your Honors. Let me start by making two distinctions. Reclassification is the change in use from agricultural to non-agricultural. So Attorney Ojastro and Counselor Mendoza is correct in saying that it needs agency certifications, starting from our level all the way to the issue. A case in point is the proposed ethanol project in Bakol. That is reclassification. It used to be an agricultural area, it involves nine hectares. The decision has not even been cleared at our level, but the proponent proceeded. That's why we issued a cease and desist order. What probably is the focus of attention of the Sangunian is SPAT rezoning. SPAT rezoning lies mostly within the jurisdiction of the city government because it is a change in the zoning ordinance of the city government. So a good example would be the proposed change in Kalawag. There is a proponent there, I think, Mr. Agnes. So that is rezoning, that is different from reclassification. Rezoning involves a change in the zoning of an area. In that case, residential to commercial. So that will not involve anymore the agencies of the Department of Agriculture and so on and so forth because that decision to zone it as residential was made locally. But there is a process, as pointed out by Counselor Mendoza. What has been the practice of the city government is to do it by piece, by spot, based on a proposed application. And what prompted that practice is the fact that our current regulation is no longer attuned to the requirements of the time. That's why we go through the process. And that's why our office is supportive of the proposal to prohibit SPAT rezoning. SPAT reclassification is not applicable here because, as understood and as was made clear to us by the issue, there is a process that will require the assent of the Department of Agriculture. They have to give us a map that they themselves validated, elevate this to the Regional Land Use Committee, specifically the issue, and clear this with the Central Office. But those involves agricultural lands. What is really at, being discussed here are SPAT rezoning. So the issue before us is, do we proceed with the current practice of SPAT rezoning? Meaning, we rezon certain parcels of land, bypassing the process in the zoning ordinance that requires the appeals board to act on existing applications and do this on a semester basis? Meaning, every six months, the zoning board will meet and then recommend to the Sangunian Panglungsod? So I think that distinction should be made. The issue really within the city is the SPAT rezoning practice, not reclassification. Because all of us understand that that is a really different animal. Thank you, Your Honor.
So we have two major items now. The zone, the SPAT...
Rezoning.
The zoning and the SPAT reclassification.
Yes, but we found out that because there is a pending proposal to prohibit, and there was a suggestion by Counselor Mendoza to revisit the provisions on exceptions and variance. Actually, that is something that we did not really make use of, but we, upon consultation with the issue, that is probably a more legal, a legal way forward in acting on SPAT applications. We can invoke exceptions, meaning to say, in an area declared as residential, if there is sufficient justification by the proponent, we can make exceptions. But not exactly rezon only the specific property. So we are considering that, Your Honors. I have instructed the zoning administrator to explore that. And moving forward, that is going to be our response to this practice. But let me end by saying that it will help our office if there is an explicit mandate from the city government through the Sangunian to prohibit SPAT rezoning and just use these existing provisions as part of our assessment. Thank you for listening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Willie Preles. Again, Attorney Ojastro.
Mr. Chair, the prior opinion that I rendered a while ago has been based on the written communication that has been sent to my office and it specifies SPAT reclassification. So on that score, we rendered the opinion based on what has been identified as SPAT reclassification issue. Now, to follow through on the comment of Willie, SPAT reclassification is a change in land use from agri to urban use, for example. And SPAT rezoning is a change in zoning category, for example, from low-density residential to commercial within urban framework. And both must still be consistent with the CLUP and justified by public interest and technical studies, of course, and still subject to public consultation and, of course, the Sangunian's action on the matter. So that's the context, Your Honor, of our legal opinion.
Thank you, Attorney Ojastro. Comment from Counselor Mendoza?
On the nomenclature, whether it's reclassification or rezoning, I would go with the suggestion of Mr. Willie Preles. SPAT rezoning would be the more appropriate term. But still, the process requires, goes beyond what we are doing now. So I would even move, Mr. Chair, that all pending requests for rezoning be held in abeyance and instead recommend to the proponents to submit themselves to apply before the zoning administrator for exception or variance instead of for rezoning.
SPAT rezoning. Before they can go through this SPAT rezoning, they should apply to the zoning administrator?
Yes, and in fact, no action is required from the Sangunian Panglungsod.
Can you come up with the necessary motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that all pending applications for rezoning be held in abeyance and instead to recommend to the proponents to instead avail of the... to the proponents to instead avail of the provision in the zoning ordinance allowing variances and for them to apply for exception or variance to the zoning administrator and to comply with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any second.
Objection, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Counselor Ariz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With all due respect, we are, if we will do that, Mr. Chair, we are... We are reneging on our obligation as a Sanggunean Panglongson. Land reclassification is a duty of the Sanggunean Panglongson. It's not a duty of any other office. We approve that, Mr. Chair. They only prepare. But it's the function of the Sanggunean Panglongson based on the local government code to reclassify. So we cannot amend the local government code and say, "Stop, don't do that," because we cannot reclassify, because it's the law that says that we are the body that can reclassify the zoning ordinance. And there is a difference between reclassification and...
Rezoning.
There's no much difference about that, Mr. Chair. It's about reclassification and conversion, Mr. Chair. The conversion issue is addressed by the Department of Agrarian Reform, from agricultural to non-agricultural. Now, once it is non-agricultural, the Sanggunean Panglongson, through the zoning ordinance, enters the picture. So we reclassify from residential, commercial, et cetera, Mr. Chair. So in the process, and as time goes by, Mr. Chair, we perform spot reclassification. It depends on the wisdom of the Sanggunean Panglongson. It depends on the vision of this government at present, of this administration at present, Mr. Chair. So we cannot prohibit the future Sanggunean from reclassifying. With that said, we cannot prohibit the next session from reclassifying, because this is a body, Mr. Chair. This is authorized by law to reclassify, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Counselor Mendoza.
The Sanggunean Panglongson has the so-called plenary powers, but such power is not absolute. We are constrained by certain parameters. For instance, we cannot pass an appropriation ordinance allowing the charging of personal services against the local development fund. Even if we exercise our plenary powers, we cannot do that. Why? Because we are constrained. The autonomy of a local governmental unit is limited. It's not absolute, it's limited. The same with changing the zoning ordinance. Even if we want, even if we exercise our wisdom and conclude that we can change, we should change the zoning ordinance, it must be done within the parameters of our authority. Now, I would ask my good friend, if I may, Mr. Chair, what would be the legal basis that would be for us, that would be our basis for us to amend a zoning ordinance? In the absence of a specific provision, we will go back to our plenary powers. But as I said, it is constrained by certain parameters. It is not absolute. So maybe the good Counselor may have a source, ano ba ang basis that, to make that amendment?
Counselor Ariz, Makareig.
That is a good point, Mr. Chair. But we have this legal rule that the power to create includes the power to destroy. We created the zoning ordinance. So it is only we that can amend it, Mr. Chair. At any time, Mr. Chair.
Again, final comment from Counselor Mendoza.
We can amend it, but it would be in accordance with certain procedures, not just because we want to amend it.
Yes, Attorney O astro.
This is just also an additional reminder, Your Honors. I said a while ago that whether or not it's spot reclassification or spot rezoning, both needs SP actions. Even for rezoning, I heard a while ago that it could already be delegated to the City Planning Office. A zoning administrator, I should say. Now, my only concern is, have we properly defined the parameters of the exercise of that power? I haven't taken a more detailed look at that point, but I think we need to do so, because the executive, the zoning administrator, who forms part already of the executive branch of the local government, would be able to act only based on what is expressly authorized by the Sanggunean or either by national law or by the Sanggunean for it to be able to do. Now, the parameters of its actions and decision-making has to be within those set parameters by the legislative body. So that is my only concern, whatever decision the Sanggunean takes. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other comment? Yes, Counselor Rosales.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed resolution of the Honorable Mendoza is, in effect, putting... Putting into effect the proposed ordinance which is still pending with the Committee on Land Use. So as a point of, or as a matter of procedure, Mr. Chairman, the proposed resolution would be premature, considering that that is the very intent of the proposed ordinance pending.
So in other words, we have a proposed ordinance tackling that particular issue?
Yes, Mr. Chair. It's pending with the Committee on Land Use. Perhaps further discussions could be made at the committee level.
Okay, so we may as well wait for the approval or disapproval of that particular proposed ordinance? Counselor Mendoza.
I believe, Mr. Chair, the Sanggunean can already decide on the matter, but I will yield to the wisdom of this body whether to wait for that ordinance or make a decision now.
I understand that nobody seconded your motion. So is that... Yes, Counselor Ariz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe there is good intention in the ordinance, Mr. Chair. There is good intention, and I can see that. But it needs only to be guided by legal premises, like we cannot limit the future Sanggunean. We cannot limit the present Sanggunean. And any ordinance cannot limit the powers of the Sanggunean. In that context, Mr. Chair, the spot reclassification seeks to prevent the unprecedented reclassification of lands that affects our city, Mr. Chair. There is good intention in that. And I still support the proposed ordinance, Mr. Chair. It's just that we need to give it the light that it will not curtail the powers of the Sanggunean Panglongson, Mr. Chair.
Okay, one last comment.
Actually, Mr. Chair, even now, it is not curtailed, even without the spot rezoning. It is not curtailed. There is a process. There is a periodic review of the, assuming there are, of the variances and exceptions applied for. And the City Planning and Development Office is mandated to review, I think, every six months or every year those requests for exceptions and to modify accordingly the zoning ordinance. But it could be through a process. So it is not actually fixed in stone. Yaon mang giraray. Even, so I think there is no need to add that provision and the proposed ordinance on spot rezoning.
Okay, so we will be waiting for the results of the hearing being conducted by the Committee on Land Use? Nobody seconded your motion? So, thank you. The rules are back and forth. Next item, please. Thank you. Recede.
Session resume.
The report of the joint hearing of the committees on disasters and resiliency, peace and order, and public safety.
Who will be reporting?
Counselor.
Counselor Aris Makaraig.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. This report has already been rendered last week. It was inadvertently included in today's session. So I move that the rendering of this report be... removed from the calendar today, Mr. Chair.
Deferred?
No, it was already rendered, Mr. Chair, last week.
Okay, Counselor Mendoza.
I second the motion of Honorable Aris Makaraig.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Counselor Mendoza.
Actually, my intent is to request for the passage of a... I move that we direct the City Planning and Development Office to submit to the Sanggunan a list of all pending applications for spot reselling, just so we can put a closure to the process or to the practice, Mr. Chair.
Any second to the motion of Counselor Mendoza.
Second.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
The proposed ordinance of Honorable Melvin Ramon de Benfe regulating the use of drones and prohibiting the flying or deployment of any unregistered and unauthorized drones in areas declared as no-fly zones for safety and security considerations.
Counselor Omar Buenefe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was discussed extensively in the committee hearings and... this before approval by the Sangguria Pangolson on second reading, Mr. Chair. And if the Chair will allow, I will present this extensively so that we can consider approving it on the second reading.
Okay, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This proposed ordinance is entitled "An Ordinance Regulating the Use of Drones and Prohibiting the Flying or Deployment of Any Unregistered and Unauthorized Drones in Areas Declared as No-Fly Zones for Safety and Security Considerations," providing penalties for violations and for other purposes. In the where assess, we have... In the whereasess, we have stated here the legal basis and...
You can proceed to the main body of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Section 1 is the title. "This ordinance shall be known as the Drone Regulation and Safety Ordinance of the City of Naga." In section 2, the declaration of policy, "It is the policy of the City Government of Naga to ensure that drone operations within its jurisdiction adhere to the guidelines and assurances of duly constituted authorities, particularly the Civil Aviation Authority of the Philippines, or CAAP, to promote safety, security, and privacy for the benefit of its constituents." Section 3, the definition of terms. Defined here is the drone, the operator, the remote pilot license, remotely piloted aircraft controller certificate, no-fly zone, registered drone, unauthorized drone, emergency use, commercial use, recreational use. On section 4, the coverage, "This ordinance shall apply to all drone operations within the territorial jurisdiction of the City of Naga." For section 5, the registration and authorization requirements. Letter A, "All drones operated within the City of Naga shall be registered with the City Government through the City Treasurer's Office Business Permits Licensing Division." Letter B, coordination with national requirements. Registration with the City Government shall be in addition to and coordinated with CAAP requirements under PICAR Part 4 for applicable drones. This PICAR Part 4 is the guidelines of the CAAP which this proposed ordinance refers to. "The City Registration System shall complement national aviation regulations and facilitate information sharing with relevant national agencies." Letter C, "No persons shall operate or deploy any drone unless it is registered and, if applicable, authorized to fly in specific areas, especially near restricted or sensitive zones." Letter D, "Operators must secure prior written authorization from the City Government before flying drones in or near any declared no-fly zones." Letter E, "Registration of drones shall be received and processed during office hours by Public Safety Office prior to endorsement for approval to the Mayor's Office." Letter F, "Documentary requirements for registration of drones, drone device." Number 1 is ID of the operator with visible address. Number 2, drone specifications, make, model, serial number, and color. Number 3, for commercial drones, photocopy of the operator's RPACC or remotely piloted aircraft. Letter G, "Emergency Operations Exception." Government agencies conducting emergency operations may operate drones without prior authorization but must notify the City Administrator's Office within 24 hours and provide operational reports within 72 hours of operation completion. On section 6, the declaration of no-fly zones. The City Government shall have the authority to declare and publish no-fly zones within the city limits, which may include but are not limited to: Number 1, government buildings and facilities, including Naga City Hall Complex, its adjacent government offices, the Naga City Police Office, including the police stations 1 to 6, City Mobile Force Company, Traffic Enforcement Unit, Mobile Patrol Unit, Bureau of Fire Protection, and other law enforcement or security facilities; Regional Trial Courts, City Prosecution Office, and Hall of Justice; detention facilities, including the Naga City District Jail, male and female dormitories, its related facilities, and other correctional centers. Number 2, critical infrastructure and utilities such as power generation and distribution facilities, substations, and transmission lines, which are the example Naga Power Plant and related installations; water supply systems, pumping stations, and reservoir operated by the Metropolitan Naga Water District; communication towers, broadcast transmitters, and data centers; transportation hubs, including the Naga Airport as covered by CAAP airspace regulations, and Beakall Central Station; educational institutions and hospitals, including all public and private schools, universities, and colleges, hospitals, medical centers, and clinics such as the Beakall Medical Center, Mother Seton Hospital, and other licensed health facilities. Number 4, places of worship and religious sites, including the Basilica Minore, its surrounding complex during religious events, Metropolitan Naga Cathedral, Penyafrancis Rhine, Carmelite Monastery, and other major churches and religious sites. Number 5, public parks, plazas, and recreational areas such as Plaza Rizal, Plaza Kinsebarteres, and Plaza Quezon, Naga City People's Mall, sports complexes, and other open public gathering spaces, especially during public events, parades, and festivals. Number 6, event or crowd-dense areas. Any location where a mass gathering, public event, or procession is taking place, including but not limited to: the Penyafrancia festival route, parades, rallies, concerts, or civic activities unless expressly authorized by the City Government and coordinated with law enforcement. Number 7, emergency and disaster operation zones. Areas where disaster response, firefighting, rescue, or emergency medical operations are ongoing as identified by the City Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Office, Public Safety Office, or Naga City Police Office. Number 8, private properties without consent. Private residential, commercial, or institutional premises where the owner or lawful occupant has not given consent for drone operations, particularly for surveillance or photography. The City Government shall coordinate with CAAP, the Naga City Police Office, and PSO to identify and designate these zones and shall inform the public through official platforms, example the City Official Facebook page. Letter A, temporary or special no-fly zones. The City Mayor through Public Safety Office in coordination with CAAP and law enforcement agencies may declare temporary or event-specific no-fly zones for reasons of public safety, emergency operations, or special events such as declarations...
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Counselor Rosales?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, because I was checking with the records of the secretariat, and it appears that this proposed ordinance has yet to be approved at the committee level. The last disposition of the committee was to further revise it, and last session there were comments submitted by the City Legal Office and the City Treasurer's Office, which was referred to the committee. So, the point, Mr. Chairman, is the committee has not yet reported this out, and duly endorse it for approval. I think this is a revised copy submitted by the Honorable Benefe for referral to the committee.
Counselor Omar, reaction to the comments of Counselor Rosales?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree to the manifestation of our...
So in other words, this has not yet been approved by...
Committee.
The committee?
The last committee hearing, Mr. Chair, is... The disposition was to incorporate the comments and recommendations of the CAAP and the other agencies. And it's been incorporated already.
What was the position of Counselor Rosales?
Submitted draft to the Honorable Benefe is a revision, which has to be referred back to the committee for further deliberation.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Honorable Rosales. So, with that manifestation, Mr. Chair, then this representation is willing to discuss this further in the committee level.
Thank you, Counselor Omar Buenefei.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
The proposed ordinance of Honorable Melvin Ramon G. Benefe rationalizing and the registration and use of e-bikes or micro-mobility vehicles in the City of Naga.
Counselor Rosales, have you checked whether this particular ordinance has been approved at the committee level? Counselor Omar?
The same, Mr. Chair. During my last report of the Committee on Transport, this was returned to the proponent for further revision, considering the manifestations of the attendance of the committee hearing. I was just referring, Mr. Chair, to the notes that was given to me by the staff that this will be for approval on second reading of the Sanggunean Panglosood. So, Mr. Chair, we will refer this back to the Committee on Transport.
Committee on Transport. Next item.
The proposed ordinance of Honorable Melvin Ramon G. Benefe establishing the Naga City Safety and Resiliency Internet Protocol Camera Program with citywide monitoring covering crime-prone, traffic-congestion-prone, flood-prone, and fire-prone areas.
Yes, Counselor Ariz.
This has already been approved for second reading on the Joint Committee on Disaster and Public Safety, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so this will be reported by the joint committees?
Already reported and approved for second reading, Mr. Chair, last week, yes.
Counselor Omar?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As manifested by Honorable Makaraig, this has been approved on second reading last November 4, and after which it has been submitted to the Committee on style for whatever else corrections, because after the approval on second reading, during the session before its approval on second reading, there were no more corrections. But we deemed it proper to submit it to the Committee on Style, and there were minor corrections made. Now, with the corrected copy, it is being presented now to the plenary for approval on third reading.
And final reading. And you make the motion now?
So, I move that the proposed ordinance, an ordinance establishing the Naga City Safety and Resiliency Internet Protocol Cameras Program with citywide monitoring covering crime-prone, traffic-congestion-prone, flood-prone, and fire-prone areas, as well as critical infrastructures and public congregation spaces, providing funds therefore and for other purposes, be approved on third and final reading, Mr. Chair.
Any second?
Second.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The latter dated November 4, 2025 of Ms. Rachel Tan, Duplex 8 A and B, Panganiban Drive, Naga City, requesting for extension up to November 15, 2025, within which to submit their position paper with respect to the proposed ordinance of Honorable Francisco Mendoza rationalizing the rental rate, rental fees in the Panganiban beautification and upgrading...
Counselor Mendoza?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for referral to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Okay, Committee on Ways and Means.
The report of the Committee on Organizational Development and Review.
Committee on Organizational Development and Review, headed by Counselor Gail Abunal Gomez.
Mr. Chair, for the Committee on Organizational Development and Review, may I request acknowledgement of his report?
Your report is duly acknowledged.
The meeting was...
Was there a quorum?
The meeting was held last November 3. There was no quorum, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Therefore, may I request that this plenary be converted as a committee of the whole? Committee of the whole, Mr. Chair. May I request conversion of the plenary as a committee of the whole?
So there was no quorum?
There was no quorum, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I thought there was a quorum. So, we are constituting ourselves into the committee of the whole?
For item number 1, the proposed ordinance authored by the Honorable Francisco Mendoza and Senior Citizen Counselor Corazon Milano establishing the Muslim Affairs Unit under the Lingkot Barangay Office of the City Government of Naga, defining its powers, functions, and organizational structure, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. May I go to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
On motion of the Honorable Francisco Mendoza, the committee resolved to elevate the matter to the Sanggunean Panglosood and to recommend the passage on second reading of an ordinance establishing the Muslim Affairs Unit under the Lingkot Barangay Office of the City Government of Naga, defining its powers, functions, and organizational structure, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes, subject to the submission of the revised proposed ordinance incorporating the comments and recommendations from the hearing as reviewed by the City Human Resource Management Office. May I know if the Honorable Mendoza is ready to present his ordinance for second?
Yes, Counselor Mendoza.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May I request that this matter be deferred to the next session as I had to integrate the comments of the City Human Resource and Management Office to the proposed ordinance?
So, deferred?
Item number 2 is the proposed ordinance authored by the Honorable Jesse Albios and the Senior Citizen Counselor Simeon Jesus Adan Jr. establishing a dental clinic in the Our Lady of Lurgis Infirmary in Barangay Karolina, Naga City. There are two similar proposed ordinances, Mr. Chair. The other one is establishing a dental clinic this time in the Naga City General Hospital. May I go to the disposition, Mr. Chair? We treated the two matters similarly, so the committee resolved to elevate the matter to the Sanggunean Panglosood and to recommend the return of the proposed ordinances to their authors for the necessary revisions incorporating the comments and recommendations arising from the hearing. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any objection? Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Item number four is the proposed ordinance authored by the Honorable Alan Raisi Makaraig, Honorable Melvin Ramon Benafe, and City Youth Counselor Yuan Angelo Pakau strengthening the city disaster risk reduction and management framework by restructuring the City Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Office, institutionalizing the local disaster risk reduction and management council, establishing the emergency operations center, recognizing the role of Barangay Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Office, and adopting the incident command system and cluster approach as command control and coordination systems for disaster response, operations, management of planned events, and exercises in the city of Naga. May I go to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
The committee resolved to elevate the matter to the Sangguneang Panglung sod and to direct the author in coordination with the CDRRMO to furnish the City Human Resource Management Office with a copy of the proposed ordinance together with the details of the qualifications and actual functions of the proposed plantilia positions for review and evaluation. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Chair, if that has been done, the committee also resolved to recommend the passage on second reading of these proposed ordinance. So may I know if the Honorable Makaraig is ready to present his proposed ordinance?
Counselor Makaraig?
May I move, Mr. Chair, that the second reading be taken up next session? We have already incorporated the barangay disaster risk in the ordinance, proposed ordinance, but we have not yet take, we have not yet referred the matter to the Human Resource
So we will tackle this during the next session?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That is all for my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Gail Abunal Gomez. Next item, please.
The letter dated November 3, 2025 of the Acting City Budget Officer submitting the balances of barangay support fund for calendar year 2024 and 2025 and the certification as to availability of appropriation for the current year.
Counselor Baldimoro, the Chairman of the Committee on Appropriations.
May I move, Mr. Chair, to refer this matter to the Committee on Appropriation?
So we will refer this matter to the Committee on Appropriations?
The letter dated November 4, 2025 of the Honorable City Mayor returning City Ordinance Number 2025-090 and signed for possible refinement and reformulation based on her comments and recommendations contained in the said letter.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes, Counselor Ariz?
This is the this is the so-called Anti-EPL ordinance which was returned by the City Mayor's office. We have considered the contents of the letter and basically it seeks to include national elected officers, government officials, within the scope of the ordinance, which was already raised by Honorable Frank Mendoza during the deliberations. However, the authors, myself and the City Youth Counselor Pakau, I don't know with the City Councilor Huying Rosales, we agree to include as amendment the request of the City Mayor to include national elected officials within the scope of the ordinance. And with that, Mr. Chair, it will be resubmitted for for the consideration of the body next session, next week.
Okay, again, we will tackle this during the next regular session.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
The proposed ordinance of Honorable Fredo Jude Ayjokno with certain city councilors mandating the installation of tactile fibbing in the Naga City Hall compound, the Naga City General Hospital, plazas and public transport terminals, and other designated areas to ensure accessibility for persons with visual impairment.
Where is the principal author?
Not around.
Yes, Counselor Baldimoro?
Mr. Chair, may I move to refer this matter to the Committee on Laws and Ordinances together with Committee on Social Development?
Committee on Laws and Ordinances and Committee on Social Development?
The proposed ordinance of Honorable Fredo Jude Ayjokno with certain city councilors institutionalizing the grant of cash incentives to Nagenyo athletes, participants, and coaches who win in the regional, national, and international sports events, academic, and skill competitions.
Again, any reaction? In the absence of the principal author? Counselor Baldimoro?
Mr. Chair, does that this proposed ordinance is still pending with the Committee on Laws and Ordinances?
Is it still pending?
Yes, could we check from the Secretariat Committee on Education? So may I move, Mr. Chair, to refer back this matter to the Committee on Education?
Committee on Education?
The letter dated November 3, 2025 of the Honorable City Mayor requesting ratification of the memorandum of agreement entered into between the city and the barangay council of Del Rosario with respect to the grant of 20,000 financial assistance for their barangay activities.
Counselor Baldimoro?
May I move, Mr. Chair, to pass a resolution ratifying the memorandum of agreement between the City Government of Naga and barangay Del Rosario?
Any second? No objection? Counselor Mendoza?
Just a manifestation, Mr. Chair, just to put on record that if this matter has been duly authorized, it does not need ratification.
Okay, no question. Next item, please.
The proposed ordinance of Honorable Jesse Albius and Senior Citizen Counselor Adan establishing a dental clinic in the Our Lady of Lourdes Infirmary in Barangay Carolina to enhance access to oral health services for the residents of the upper barangays of the city.
I understand this was already discussed by the report of Counselor Gail Abunal Gomez? Okay. Next item.
The proposed ordinance of Honorable Jesse Albius and Senior Citizen Counselor Adan establishing a dental clinic in the Naga City General Hospital highlighting the importance of oral health.
This was also tackled by Counselor Gail Abunal Gomez?
The report of the Committee on Ways and Means?
Committee on Ways and Means headed by Counselor Frank Mendoza?
May I request acknowledgement of the report of the Committee on Ways and Means?
Your report is duly acknowledged?
The committee hearing was held last last week with only Counselor Nathan Siri and myself present, which understood given the weather at the time.
There was no quorum?
There was no quorum. So may I request, Mr. Chair, that this plenary be converted into a committee of the whole?
Okay, we are convening as the committee of the whole.
First item, proposed ordinance authored by this representation imposing rental fee for commercial use of the Naga City Government's boom truck by private entities and providing guidelines for the implementation thereof. During a very lengthy debate between me and Counselor Nathan Siri,
The two of you, huh?
Yes.
Disposition?
We agreed to elevate the matter to the Sangguneang Panglung sod and to recommend that the proposed ordinance imposing rental fees for the commercial use of the city boom truck by private entities be scheduled for public hearing on November 26, 2025 as said imposition is in the nature of a revenue measure. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Item two and item three were taken together as this refers to the request of the Naga City General Hospital for the adjustment of their service fees. In particular, letter dated August 5 of Dr. Sanchez requesting for a passage of an ordinance prescribing fees for certain services of the Naga City General Hospital. The second letter is a follow-up letter as well as an additional item which he requested that likewise be added among the service fees of the Naga City General Hospital. May I move to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
The committee resolved to elevate the matter to the Sangguneang Panglung sod and to recommend that the proposed ordinance prescribing the official rates of certain hospital services of the Naga City General Hospital be included in the public hearing on November 26, 2025. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
That ends my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Mendoza?
The letter dated November 5, 2025 from Engineer Rolli Campellos of HSDO requesting for ratification of the memorandum of agreement between the city and Ms. Jacqueline Reyes on the grant of financial assistance by the city government to the families affected by the road widening project along Balatas Kararayan Road.
Reaction, Counselor Baldimoro, Chairman of the Committee on Appropriations?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, there is a memorandum of agreement between the City Government of Naga and Ms. Jacqueline Reyes relative to the financial assistance to the affected families on the ongoing road widening at Balatas to Kararayan Road, subject for ratification. So may I move, Mr. Chair, for a passage of a resolution ratifying the memorandum of agreement between the City Government of Naga and Ms. Jacqueline Reyes?
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
The proposed ordinance of Honorable Vito C. Borja II amending certain sections of ordinance number 28 in the 018 or the towing and expanded wheel clamp ordinance of the city by designating the Naga City People's Mall parking spaces along J. Hernandez Avenue from the corner of Prieto Street to Samora Street as a no parking and wheel clamp zones from 5 to 10 p.m. to serve as designated vendors area of the Naga City People's Mall.
Counselor Dr. Boots Borja?
Approval of the proposed ordinance, these towing ordinance are based from the previous requested ordinance by the public market. So with this, we designate a wheel parking or clamp area by designating the Naga City People's Mall parking space along J. Hernandez Avenue from the corner of Prieto Street to Samora Street as a no parking and wheel clamp area from 5 p.m. to 10 p.m. to serve as designated vendors area of the Naga City People's Mall. Naga City People's Mall, Mr. Chair.
Motion? So move.
I move for the approval of these proposed ordinance.
Any second?
For the final, third and the final review.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
The proposed ordinance of Honorable Vito C. Borja II amending section 5 of ordinance number 2001-55 or the sidewalk vending and regulatory ordinance of the city by allowing vending activities along the portion of J. Hernandez Avenue designated as parking spaces alongside the Naga City People's Mall from the corner of Prieto Street, Samora Street, from 5 to 10 p.m.
Again, Counselor Dr. Boots Borja?
I recommend for the approval of this proposed ordinance as stated. This is for the third and final reading and approval of this ordinance. So I move.
Okay, any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
The email dated November 4, 2025 of retired judge attorney Soliman Santos pertaining to the Naga Ruins Heritage Site along Penyafrancia Avenue.
We will refer this to the Committee on Culture and the Arts? Okay?
The report of the Committee on People Empowerment and Good Governance?
Committee on People Empowerment headed by Counselor Gail Abunal Gomez?
Mr. Chair, may I request acknowledgement for the report of the Committee on People Empowerment and Good Governance?
Was there a quorum?
The meeting was held last November 7, Mr. Chair. There was no quorum. So may I request for the conversion of this plenary to the Committee of the Whole?
So this, we are convening into the Committee of the Whole?
So there was only one item, Mr. Chair, which is the application for accreditation signed by architect Josenia B. Merencilio for Nueva Caseres Heritage Movement Incorporated as a non-government organization in the city of Naga. May I go to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
We acknowledge, Mr. Chair, the active involvement of the applicant in the city government's heritage initiative. So the committee resolved to elevate the matter to the Sangguneang Panglung sod and to recommend approval of the application for accreditation of the Nueva Caseres Heritage Movement Incorporated as a non-government organization in the city of Naga. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
That is all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gail Abunal Gomez?
New business, the letter dated October 20, 2025 of Blaya Balani, AP Coordinator noted by Raquel Papa, Principal Mac Mariano Elementary School, seeking support and assistance for data on establishment of
Committee on Culture and the Arts?
Letter dated October 28, 2025 of Engineer Edgar D. Montes, Executive Officer Casuraco II requesting for refund of the business and franchise tax paid by the cooperative amounting to 1.6%.
Committee on Ways and Means?
The proposed ordinance of Honorable Melvin Ramon Benafe regulating the use of public roads in the city by slow-moving vehicles and directing the use of outermost lane for such vehicles
Committee on Transport?
The letter dated October 30, 2025 of Lawrence Angelo Sendin, Chief Executive Officer Prieto Cargo Forwards requesting for exemption and implementation of truck ban
Committee on Transport?
The letter dated November 4, 2025 of Gian Albert Pareino Arcega, Operation Manager Double El Guns and Ammo Corporation, Duplex 10A.
Committee on Ways and Means?
The letter dated November 3, 2025 from Ms. Melissa Montes, Logistics Officer Magrau Air Products Incorporated requesting for the grant of a special exemption in the implementation of
Committee on Transport?
The endorsement from the Tri-Mobile Task Force submitting the two applications for transfer of Tri-Mobile franchise.
Committee on Transport?
The email dated November 5, 2025 from Mr. Deber Caso, JMR Good Governance Center submitting a proposed amendment to ordinance number 2015-011.
Committee on Education?
The letter dated September?
Yes, Counselor Baldimoro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before the referral to the Committee on Education, could we request, Mr. Chair, for an endorsement from the City Mayor for record purposes? This proposed amendatory ordinance submitted by Mr. Dave Bercasio.
We will request what particular item?
Endorsement from the City Mayor. The proposed amendatory ordinance, Mr. Chair, was submitted by Mr. Dave Bercasio.
Is Mr. Dave Bercasio not a representative of the City Mayor?
Just for record purposes, Mr. Chair, endorsement from the City Mayor.
Okay, so we will request endorsement from the City Mayor herself?
The letter dated September 3, 2025 of Punung Barangay Corazon in Penya Flor, Barangay Kalawak requesting for reallocation of the 20,000 pesos intended for financial assistance. The letter dated November 6, 2025 of Analisa Abainsa, owner of EVA Pamundagan Berting Home requesting to have an agreement with Our Lady of Lourdes Infirmary on its ambulance and health services. The letter dated November 3, 2025, Punung Barangay Leonso Libwit, Barangay Carolina submitting barangay ordinance number 2025-01 declaring establishing the Intermodal Terminal and barangay.
Committee on Laws and Ordinances?
Endorsement dated November 7, 2025, Acting City Budget Officer forwarding the 2026 annual budget of barangay libuto.
Committee on Appropriations?
Endorsement dated November 7, 2025, Acting City Budget Officer forwarding the 2025 supplemental budget of barangay libuto.
Committee on Appropriations?
Other matters, the letter dated October 28, 2021, District Engineer Romeo de Loiras of the DPWH 3rd Engineering District.
Yes, Counselor Omar Buenafe?
Mr. Chair, before we proceed to the other matters, may I request that we consider item number 11, the letter dated November 3 of Punung Barangay Libwit to be referred instead to the Committee on Transport where the matter is pending, Mr. Chair.
So before the Committee on Laws and Ordinances, you are saying that this should be referred to the Committee on Transport?
Yes, Mr. Chair, since this is already pending in the Committee on Transport.
Okay, so Committee on Transport?
Other matters, the letter dated October 28, 2025, District Engineer Romeo de Loiras of the DPWH 3rd Engineering District pertaining to Esper Resolution Number 2025-471 and 472.
We take note of this matter?
The final demand for return of possession of privately held and vacant or idle portions of the Heimenes Mariano property, Naga City Hall compound, and Civic Center.
Noted.
You notice of hearing for antecedent case number 2025-074 on the application of Palawan Broadcasting Corporation for a certificate of public convenience to install, operate, and maintain a nationwide direct-to-user. The letter dated November 4, 2025 of Debbie Torres, Director for Bureau of Local Government Supervision, DILG, acknowledging receipt of resolution number 2025-622 condemning in the strongest possible terms. Nominal voting?
Counselor Baldimoro?
Before the nominal voting, Mr. Chair, may I propose for the following schedule of regular session? Since the some members of the Philippine Councilors League will attend the Regional Assembly on November 24 and 25 and also the continuing legal education program on December 1, 2, 3. May I propose the following schedule, Mr. Chair? November 27, December 4, December 9, December 16, and the last session instead of December 23 be held on December 19.
November 27, December 4?
December 9.
December 9?
December 16.
December 16 and?
19.
19? Motion? So move.
If the body is amenable, Mr. Chair, may I move for the following schedule of our regular session?
Is there any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. So it's December 19, the last. Next item, please.
Nominal voting?
Counselor Rosales?
Mr. Chair, may I move to transfer all resolutions and ordinances to nominal voting and approve the same?
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Adjourn.